Good evening. Thank you. This is a wonderful thank you. The turnout tonight just says a lot, speaks volumes about our community. I want to thank you for taking the time out of your schedules, your very busy schedules, to become educated. Educated on the issue of drugs and the effects it can have on your families. This is an important community issue. And this is another example of the schools and the city working together as a community, coming together as a community that cares. We want you to know that we have committed all of our resources, both the schools and the cities, to address this issue. And I want to let you know that each of you should have received a handout. Did you get the handouts? Anybody need a handout? If you do, raise your hand and we'll try to get one to you. It's important you can follow what's going on with the handout and also, did you get note cards? The note cards are available for you to write down your questions. Now, we'll try to deal with the issue of questions, the question-answer period at the end, but in the event that we don't get to your question, we will try to publicize everything on our website, the 25andLive website. So, the goal would be to address as many issues and questions as possible, but if we don't, we will address them all eventually. So, make sure you take the time to fill out the note cards with your question. We'll try to get some of them tonight. We're trying to keep this agenda intact because you're going to hear some very riveting conversations tonight from people that have experienced the effects of drugs firsthand and the effects of the family. Now, I'm going to ask you all, do me a favor, especially the media. The news channels and everyone with a camera, please, you can take pictures of me and everyone else except for the private speakers, the family speakers. I'm going to ask you to respect that. Now, we are videotaping this entire event, but their pictures will be blacked out. So, you could see them firsthand if you're here. We ask you to take no pictures. Fair enough? With that, I'd like to introduce the school superintendent, Steve Marlowe, but before I do that, there are two people that I think deserve a round of applause and to be acknowledged. First, two people that care so deeply about this community and the families and the young people of this community, and they're committed to getting the word out. They've obviously done a nice job because look at this turnout. Angie Zalesnick, the clerk of courts, and Mary Dolus, the guidance counselor at IHS. How about a round of applause? See, Angie, you thought you were going to get away, but really, they did a phenomenal job of putting this together. With that, Steve Marlowe.
Thank you, Mayor, and on behalf of our school district, I want to welcome you to Independence Middle School, and thank you for coming. We're here because we want to educate and inform our community. We are committed as a district to support our staff and our students in any endeavor that we feel is best for our community. Our goal tonight is to educate you, parents, children, community members of the danger of heroin and other drugs. This issue is not unique to Independence, but we feel that addressing this problem in a proactive, non-threatening manner is what's best for our community. Unfortunately, we all make bad decisions, and unfortunately, children make bad decisions. And it's up to us as adults to lead them and guide them and set good examples for our children. We're here tonight to make a difference. We're here tonight to make a difference. I again want to thank you for coming. Please know that your efforts in assisting us in addressing the drug issues in our communities will not go unnoticed. Again, we're here to make a difference. With that, I'd like to now introduce Donna Barrett, pastor of Rockside Church.
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. I want to just briefly share some context for this meeting with a scenario that has happened in another community that I think will serve us well tonight in holding out hope for what potentially can happen in our community and also to help us to see the importance of the participation of all the sectors of our community. As a pastor, I've been following a study that reports and documents transformation coming to communities all over the world. And as encouraging as these reports have been to see in other countries, I've asked the question, "But what about the United States?" Well, in Clay County, Kentucky, and a few spots in Texas, I recently watched a 90-minute video of a community that was being wrecked, not only with the deaths related to heroin, but all sorts of addictions, alcoholism, drug abuse, poverty, and corruption. The city came together, not just the clergy, but law enforcement, recovery assistance, educators, public officials, and they each did their part and prayed, and a miracle of transformation took place in that community as a turnaround of a territory with far greater problems than Independence, far less going for it than this community. And so, that pattern again and again in these communities includes everyone doing their part. Prayer alone won't do it. A recovery program alone can't change things. Law enforcement won't accomplish it alone. It's not either/or, but it's both-and. It's all of us working together. Each one in this room is an important part of the solution, and united prayer invites God to help us with the part that only God can do while we do the part that He won't do for us. So, I share that, share this concept to build our hope, to bring us an understanding of the role of each one of us in this room, and to affirm how valuable each one of you are in this process as we each humbly do our part and then together pray for God to do His part. And so, I just wanted to share that context tonight. I thank you for your attention, and now here's Mayor Kurtz to introduce our next speaker.
Thank you, Donna. I'm also very proud of the fact that we have members of all of the clergy here from all our different churches in the council. Thank you very much. And now, I have the privilege, the privilege, of introducing a very courageous, courageous young woman who's agreed to share her story with all of us. She promised herself one time that she would never do drugs, never use heroin. And we'll learn tonight about her experimenting with alcohol and other drugs, which led her right to that door, the door she said she'd never go through. Will she walk through it? The problem is, it slammed behind her faster than she ever imagined. I'll remind everyone, no video at this point, please. And let's welcome Kim. Kim's a little nervous. Come on. Now, Kim, I'm going to help, take that deep breath. Come on, deep breath. She is very strong. Give her your full attention. You won't be disappointed.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kim. Better? Okay. I am quite nervous. I've never spoken in front of such a large group before. I want to share with you guys my story. I graduated from high school in 2002. I went right to work. I didn't go to school. I started working at Pizza Hut. I started off really small. I started off serving. Then, I started to get more responsibilities. I started having to stay later, and they ended up making me a manager. And then, they ended up making me a general manager. So, I got more responsibility. I got more money, and I had a whole store to run for myself. And it all kind of went downhill from there. I started having parties at the store after hours when I shouldn't have. I was letting all my friends come in and drink, and the drinking led to smoking pot. And after that, that was probably about 2003 when I was working there, I thought that I had the world at my hands. I had money and friends, and everybody wanted to come party with me, and I was on top of the world. In 2004, I met my boyfriend at the time, and he was into partying and doing drugs and drinking. And we started doing drugs together and drinking together. And, sorry. When I first met him...
Go ahead.
Thank you. When I first met him, he was amazing. I loved everything about him, his honesty, and I thought was honesty. We had a group of friends that we were hanging out with. We were drinking, we were smoking. Smoking led to using ecstasy and cocaine, and pretty much anything I could get my hands on, I did. Shortly after all the experimenting, I was introduced to heroin, and I didn't think that I would do it, and I was very against doing it. And then, I saw my boyfriend at the time do it, and he was fine, and nothing happened to him. And he went in doing it fine, and he came out doing it fine, and he looked like he was having fun, so I said, "Screw it. I'm going to do it anyway." So, I did, and I did it for about a week straight. It was every day that we would do heroin. And I started off snorting it, and then after that full week, I stopped and I started to get sick. And I started to have flu-like symptoms. I had the body aches, and I had a runny nose, and I was uncomfortable. Life was very uncomfortable after that happened. And I found out that it was just from me withdrawing from the heroin. And I figured after I had gone through the withdrawal, that now that I know what it's like, I'll just do a little bit more, and then I'll be able to stop because now I know what the withdrawal is like and I can get through it. And that never happened because after I started back up again, instead of snorting it, I decided that I would start shooting it in my arms, in my hands, anywhere that I could really. And after all that, that led to I needed to do it every day. It started off fun, and it was party-like, and then it turned into I needed to do it to function. I needed to do it to get up and make a phone call. I needed to do it to get up and take a shower. I needed to use heroin to go to work and just all-around function. And in, when was it? Was it 2004? Yeah? In 2004, we got an idea that we would go to New York City because we heard that heroin was cheaper and easier to get. And so, we left, it was probably like 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. We had this big plan that we would just go to New York and we would come right home. We'd get what we needed, we'd come home, life would be great. And it wasn't. We lied to my parents, who were out of town. I told them that I was going to Cedar Point or something. And we'd left for New York with very little bit of heroin left. And when we got to New York, we went to like Washington Square Park, Central Park, and it was everywhere that I had looked up on the internet where you could buy heroin. It was so easy. All I had to do was do a Google search and type, "Where can I buy heroin?", and it all came up. And I printed it, and I printed directions, how to get everywhere that I needed to go. And we ended up, when we got to New York, we ended up meeting people. We were just going up to random strangers and asking them for drugs. And it didn't matter if we thought they were cops or not, we just asked them. And we ended up meeting people that said that they had what we needed, and it ended up being fake, and we had given them all our money. And it was just bad. And we decided that we were going to come home, and we were making phone calls left and right to people that we knew back here to try and, you know, to try to have them front us some drugs because we had no money because they had taken it all. And on the way home, we stopped at a gas station and we got, we got gas, and I had used the credit card that I'd stole from my parents to get gas and food. And we somehow got turned around, and we didn't realize that we were going the wrong way and that we were actually, instead of going to Ohio, we were actually going back towards New York. So, we were in such a rush to get back because we wanted to get back before the withdrawal started happening and the aches and the pains and the sickness. And I took over driving, and we were about eight miles from the Ohio border, and the sickness had really kicked in, and I nodded out at the wheel. And I crossed, I was in the right lane, I crossed over to the left lane, and by the time I woke up, we were heading down a median. And I tried to overcorrect the car, and that didn't help. And I ended up flipping the car three times. I think the police report said that I slid on my roof about 175 feet. All I remember from the accident was hearing a lot of crunching and the glass shattering, and I remember the dirt in my mouth and the airbags blowing out in my face. And I remember that Alan was next to me, and I was able to get out. The car ended up resting upright, and I was able to get out, and he was not. The back window had blown out into the back of his head, and he ended up having to, I believe, be cut out of the car. He was lifelighted back to, or he was lifelighted to Youngstown. I was taken to a hospital in Pittsburgh. My parents were in Nashville at a wedding. They had no idea where I was. They got a phone call, I believe, at 3:00 in the morning, that my boyfriend had been in an accident in my car, but that they didn't know where I was. I came home. I was in a lot of pain because I was going through withdrawals. So, I lied and said it was pain from the accident, and I got them to take me back to the hospital, and they put me on various other drugs, pain medications, anything that would try to make the sickness be a little bit better. My boyfriend was in the hospital in a medically induced coma for about three months, I believe. And that three months that he was gone, I was okay, and I didn't use. I went through the withdrawals and I was fine. When he came home, I thought things would be better and we would get on the right track and we would have a normal relationship, and that didn't happen either. He came home, and we picked up right where we left off. He sued my insurance company for a quarter of a million dollars and won the case, and he got all that money. So, that just funded our habit even more. It was October of 2005 that we had gotten a lot of money, and we went out and we bought more drugs than normal. This time, it wasn't just heroin. He bought cocaine, I believe, as well. He might have bought methamphetamines, I'm not really sure. But we were partying all night like it was our last night, and it happened to be his last night. He dropped me off probably around midnight at my house, and he went home, and I was to go back to his house in the morning because that's what I would do. Instead of going to work on time, I would go to his house and we would get high, and then I'd go to work when I felt like it. And that morning, I went to his house, and his mother was still home, and she wouldn't let me in because I was the bad seed, I was the bad influence. So, I wasn't able to go in his room and wake him up and get high with him like I normally would. So, I went to work, and the whole time, I was trying to call him, and he wasn't answering. And I thought that maybe he was just still sleeping, or maybe he was high and just didn't really feel like answering my phone calls. So, I worked, and when I say work, I mean, I sat at my desk and I would sneak off in the bathroom, and I would shoot up heroin, and I would come out and I would sit at my desk and I would look at my computer screen. And that was about as much work as I did every day. And my mom came over to my desk and told me, because I was working with her at the time, and my mom came over and told me that the police were at my boyfriend's house and that he had overdosed and that he didn't make it. So, that was a really long day. It was a really hard day to know that he had just been with me. We had just been getting high together, and that maybe if I would have come to his house either shortly after his mother left and I could have got in, maybe I could have done So, that was October, that was the middle of October, and towards the end of October, I told my parents that I had a heroin problem and that I wanted help. And I really didn't. I just needed somebody to help me get through the withdrawals until I could build up enough money to go get high again. And so, I went to rehab for three days. I did an inpatient detox center at Laurelwood in Willoughby, and I convinced them after the third day that I was all better, and I thought that I was. I told them that my insurance ran out and I couldn't pay them anymore, so they shoved me out the door. And I had my mom pick me up, and I promised I would go to meetings, and I promised the world. And all I did was, the minute I got home, I was probably there for a few hours, and then I drove down to Cleveland and found some random person on the street and bought drugs off them, and I got high that same night. Shortly after there, I started working at Applebee's as a server because I figured it's always cash in my pocket. I got, you know, minimum wage, $2.13 an hour, but I always had tips. People were always giving me money. And if people weren't giving me money from tips, then I was stealing it. I was stealing from people's purses. I was stealing wallets. I stole from strangers. I stole from my family. It didn't matter who you were. No one was safe when they were around me. I would take from anybody. So, in December, we were supposed to go to Las Vegas. My parents didn't trust me to stay home by myself, so they had something that they, some work thing that she had to be in Las Vegas for, so I was going to go with them. And I had no plan to sneak drugs on the plane. I was just going to do it. I don't know how I was going to do it. I figured I would figure it out when I got there, but I left work, and I was supposed to come straight home, and I didn't. I needed to get high, and I needed to have enough drugs to get me through the whole trip for Vegas. I needed drugs for the plane. I needed drugs while I was out there, and if I ran out while I was out there, I planned to go find somebody in Las Vegas and have them give me drugs, whatever I could find. I was getting sick again. I didn't have enough on me to manage my life, so when I was driving out to Cleveland, I wrecked my car again. I nodded out at the wheel again, and this time, when I woke up, I was coming really close to a car, and so I slammed on my brakes, and that spun my car out of control. And I was probably doing 60, 65, and I slammed into a guardrail, and I had to call my parents again and tell them that I was in another car accident. And I don't remember everything that I told them. I told them I was taking somebody home, but I had nobody in my car. And the police came. They took me to the hospital. This time, they told me, I stayed for, I was in the hospital for two days, maybe three, and this time, I had to go back to rehab. I had no choice at this point. My dad and my mom took me to rehab, and my dad looked me in the eyes and said, "If you don't do this, if you don't stay here, if you don't get better, then you don't come home, and you don't have a family, and you lose all our numbers, and you're just, you're not part of this family anymore." And I don't know why it struck me this time. I don't know what made me realize that he was serious, but I knew that if I didn't try to work the program in rehab, that my only other option was to live on the streets because none of my friends wanted anything to do with me because I stole from them. My family wanted nothing to do with me because I stole from them too. My brother hated me. He wouldn't talk to me. I don't think we talked for six months. I had nobody, and I just, I had no, I had a choice. I had a choice to stay and have a family, or I had a choice to go live on the streets and find somebody that wanted me. And at that point in my life, nobody wanted me. Even the bums on the street wouldn't have wanted me. And I stayed in, I stayed in rehab for 30 days, and it was embarrassing at first because the first time that I was there, I told them after three days, "Oh, I'm cured, and I'm never coming back, and you'll never see me because I'm all better." And I had to walk back in that place with some of the same people that had been there when I was there the first time, and I had to look them in the eye and show them that I wasn't any better than they were, and I thought that I was, and I thought that I was above it all, and I was better than everybody and that I could handle it. And I couldn't, and having to ask for help was really hard. I think the first three or four days that I was there, I had a really big chip on my shoulder. I had an attitude. I didn't want to hear what anybody had to say. I didn't care. If you wanted to help me, I didn't, I didn't want it. And after being there for about a week and getting everything out of my system naturally, they wouldn't give me any kind of pain medicine. Anything that I took had to be non-narcotic, and I had to go through the withdrawals every day for about a week, and it was awful. And I wanted to bang my head against a wall because I thought that that would feel better than the pain that I was feeling. And at one point, going through withdrawals, I believe that I actually did bang my head against a wall because that felt better than the pain that I was feeling. And I ended up staying in the program for 30 days inpatient. I wasn't allowed to come home for Christmas. I wasn't allowed to come home for New Year's, and I have a big family that celebrates every holiday, and we're always together. And it was the first time that I wasn't included, and it was the first time I wasn't allowed to be with them. I was allowed to make a phone call, I think, once a week, and it had to be monitored. We weren't allowed to have no cell phones. I had to be up at 6:00 in the morning. Bedtime was 11:00, and I got three meals. It was pretty much like jail. It felt like jail. I was allowed to leave. I watched a lot of people go and leave to go get high and not come back. And that was hard because there were days that I wanted to leave with them, but my dad's words about me not having a family anymore kind of stuck with me. And after the 30 days, I did 90 days outpatient, three days a week with counselors and other addicts like myself. And I have been sober a little over six years now. And I have been sober a little over six years now. And I still work the program from time to time. I, thank you. Um, I just got married in September and my family is amazing. And they have been there through all the good and all the bad. And it's hard. Um, there are still days where it's, it would be way easier to go out and get high and not deal with having a bad day at work or not having to deal with, I don't have a new car anymore. I always had new cars, but after wrecking two, my dad was not trying to help me get a new car anymore. So, um, it's, it's not easy, but it's possible. It's, it's possible to get better. Um, you have to find the support. And I was lucky enough to have my family and make new friends and have a husband at this point that supports me through everything. And when I have bad days, I have people that I can talk to. And I don't shut the world out anymore. And I just have people that understand. And even if I don't think people will understand, I tell them anyway. Um, because at this point, I've done enough and I've been through enough that nobody can judge me anymore than I judged myself back then. So I think that's it. I think that's my story.
Kim, your family can be very proud of you tonight. And I think everybody, I speak for everybody in this room when I say, "Thank you for your courage, your conviction, your commitment to being the best person you can be." Thank you very much. Next, we have someone who's also lived this situation, Kim's mother, Mary Ellen. You'll hear her tell a story tonight and how she enabled her daughter and helped perpetuate the situation. What she wishes she would have known, what she wishes she would have done differently and much, much more. Mary Ellen.
How do you follow that? You know, there's a point in my life when I was not so proud of my daughter as I am tonight. I'm just thrilled of how far she's come. You know, Kim's teenage years were challenging at best. She was our, she was our, she pushed the envelope. She tried to get away with as much as she possibly could. She was the little daredevil. Um, she didn't want to go to college. She graduated, like she said, in 2002. She got a good job with Pizza Hut a year after. Towards the end of 2003, she was dating a really nice boy that we, that we really liked and, and we thought her life was good. And then in 2004, she started dating Alan. And we were told, I, I never knew Alan. We were just told that, "Keep your daughter away from him. He's had a lot of problems. He's been in jail, he's had, he has drug problems." And it's easy to say when you're sitting on that side, but when you've got an almost 20-year-old, you don't have a lot of control. And we tried that with her while she was in high school, dating guys we didn't really approve of and that always backfired. So we just kind of let her go at her own pace. In June of 2004, we weren't in Nashville. We were actually in Kingsport, Tennessee. We had driven down for a wedding. And I'll never forget that night to this day. I can't forget it. We got a call, it was 3:00 in the morning. My husband, um, it was Alan's father. He asked to talk to my husband and he said, "There's been an accident. My son's just been lifelighted to St. Elizabeth Hospital in Youngstown. He's in emergency brain surgery and we have no idea where your daughter is." Well, my husband's first thought as he told me was, "She let him use the car and he's gonna, you know, give her hell for it." My first thought is, "She's somewhere in a ditch, nobody knows where she's at." And I just went into shock. So we had driven down with my sister and her husband. We called them and all I could say was "accident" and then I just couldn't do anything. Um, they got us on the road. We had called my son. We could not find him. Um, we called my husband's sister who was on the Medina Police Force at the time. And she finally, through her resources, tracked her down. She was fine. She had called her old boyfriend to bring her home. When we got home, it was just, I, I can't even describe the feeling that we had. It was relief, but we were scared because we found out she was responsible for the accident and this kid was in brain surgery and was in an induced coma and we didn't know what was gonna happen. My husband went and his sister went out to Pittsburgh to get the car. And it's one of the very few times I've seen my husband cry. Nobody should have lived through that accident, but Kim did. Um, we did find the needles in the back of the car, in the trunk. We found her diary talking about, you know, going to New York and getting heroin. And of course, it was, Alan was diabetic, so those were his needles for that. Um, I believe she told us, you know, she was just looking up the information on the internet for Alan and she wasn't doing drugs. And of course, we believed her. She was our baby. She didn't do those kind of things. Um, in the beginning of 2005, I wanted her to, you know, kind of get on with her life and go in a forward direction. So I thought I was encouraging her to go to take a class at Tri-C. Now I know I was forcing her to do something that she had no interest in doing. But she enrolled, I gave her a laptop, you know, it was something that, in hindsight, I wanted her to do. So she would stay with my parents the night she was in, in class because they lived right there. And my mom called me one day and said, "Kim's stealing from us." And I'm like, "No, Kim's not stealing from you." But we confronted her and grandma was forgetful. Grandma didn't know where the, you know, she put the money, but Kim was not stealing. Things at home started to disappear. Um, well, if it wasn't nailed down, it was gone. We had a huge cabinet full of DVDs and movies and things like that. And we went down there one day and they were all gone. The DVD players were gone. I remember my son coming to me one day and saying, "The DVD player you got me for Christmas, I don't have it." And of course, every time you confronted Kim, she didn't do it. Um, at that point, my son was so fed up, he moved. He said, "I can't take this anymore. I'm out of here." And they did not talk. Um, we would ask her about the mileage on the car, you know? I knew how, she worked with, with us and, um, I knew how far she went to work every day. And there was no way that mileage was matching up. The odometer's wrong. The odometer's broken. I mean, this kid could come up with an excuse for everything. Um, one day, she came to work. She works with me and my, my girlfriend and she said she didn't get her paycheck. So Lori gets on the phone and she's calling Human Resources, "Where's Kim's paycheck? Where's Kim's paycheck?" Well, we had proof that it was cash. She had gotten the check and it was cash. So at that point, I thought, "Okay, something's going on with her." We thought it was drugs because she was hanging out with Alan. And I would take her for drug tests. I would wake her up in the morning and say, "Okay, we're going for a drug test." And we would go for the drug test. With her being over 18 years old, you don't have a lot of rights as a parent. Um, you kind of lose those rights, which I think is totally wrong, but that's a whole nother story. Um, but I would take her for the tests. She would go back, get the tests and then I would ask, I would make her call for the results while I was standing there um, so I can hear them myself. And every time, they came back negative. And then I would think, "Okay, something's still not right here." So I, we took her to a behavioral specialist. And that was an experience. The behavioral specialist, um, said that Kim had very low self-esteem. But that her dad and I were too hard on her. We needed to, um, trust her more. We needed to, you know, let her do her thing. She was 20 years old. Well, she was 21 at that point. And I kept saying, "No, something's wrong. Something's not right." You know, you feel it in the pit of your stomach. So I told her, I said, "Well, we think she's on drugs." And the behavioral specialist looked at us and said, "I would know if she was on drugs. She's not doing drugs. She was that good. Kim was that good." So anyway, you know, she kept going and I would take her. But she was always sickly looking. I mean, Kim is thin as it is. She was probably about 20 to 25 pounds lighter than she is now. I mean, she always looked like death. Um, in December of 2005, we were going to Las Vegas, my husband and I. We were, we were going as a gift from my girlfriend and her husband. But we couldn't go and enjoy ourselves because we had Kim, so she was coming with us. We get the call that she had another accident and my husband threw his hands in the air and he said, "I'm done. I am so done." He had talked to his sister. His sister said, "Tell the Highway Patrol that you think she's doing drugs," which he did. In the meantime, I'm in her car getting everything out because I didn't want her to get in trouble if she did have drugs in there. I mean, that's where my head was. You know, your instinct is to protect your children and sometimes protecting them is actually doing more harm than good, which I found out the hard way. Um, I remember a time when she had just stolen something. I took her cellphone. I was so angry with her, I threw it across the room and it broke. So I went out and bought her a new one because I felt bad, you know? I mean, things like that was for almost two years of going through this. So when my husband finally said he was telling the police, um, the, the Highway Patrol officer looked at her and said, "I don't think so." But we took her to, she was transported to Southwest General Hospital. Um, and when we wa, when we went into the emergency room, they, we told them, "We think she's on heroin." They did a test and it was negative. And I'm just thinking, "She cannot be this bad of a driver. She's, something's gotta be wrong here." So we took her home and I was kind of relieved because, okay, everybody says she's not a drug addict. She's not a drug addict. So we get her, we get her home. The next day, she was pretty much on lockdown. It was just us and a friend of hers from work who came to visit her. And we hadn't gone anywhere. My son still wasn't coming home. And I'm kind of mad at her because I'm supposed to be in Vegas and it's December and it was cold and it was warm there. And I was, you know, pretty much disgusted at that point. So she said to, uh, her friend from work came upstairs and said, "I think you need to come downstairs. There's something wrong with Kim." And my first thought is, "Now what?" You know, "Now what's wrong with Kim?" So I went downstairs and she's telling us that she has a, she has a brain tumor. She had been to the doctor and she told him that's why she was walking funny, why she couldn't focus. And this is what was wrong. So I called her doctor. Her doctor was nice enough to talk to me because she had known what was going on. And she said, "Just bring her to the hospital right away. I haven't seen her, so I don't think that's true, but just bring her to the hospital." By the time we got her to the hospital, we realized that she was going through withdrawal and she was going through bad. She was hunched over. She was, she couldn't even pick her head up. She was so weak. And when she got back into the, um, into the room, we had her tested again. And I, and I, to this day, I still believe it's divine intervention because now she tested positive for an opiate. And then we were able to get the social worker involved. We did all kinds of tests. The doctor wanted to do all kinds of tests just to make sure that she was, um, you know, there was nothing seriously wrong from the accident. And the, a neurologist came in and said, "Nope, she's just going through detox and she's gonna be hurt." She was in the fetal position. She was sweating. She was just, it was the hardest thing to watch. But you couldn't do anything because we weren't gonna give her anything to, um, make it feel better. We had done that at one point. We thought she had kidney stones. She had convinced us she had kidney stones. I don't know how she convinced the hospital, but she was put in the hospital and they put her on a morphine drip and she was one of the happiest kids I've ever met. So, um, so that night, we got with the social worker and called, she called Laurelwood for us and we told them we were bringing her back. Um, she, you know, she said, um, you know, she didn't really want to go. But my husband, who was more of the rock, I was, he was just, he was fed up and he was taking charge. Um, and he told, that's when he told her, like she told you, that, you know, "You're gonna stay here for 30 days. You can't get out. You can't be home for Christmas. And if you don't do what they say, you can't come home." You know, I'm crying and he's just fed up. So then we had the problem because all this time, you know, we're making excuses for Kim. She's stealing from everybody and everything. I remember one incident where she borrowed money from one of her cousins and then took the money from her purse to pay her back. Nobody in our family was talking to Kim. They were not happy with Kim. And the reason they weren't is they thought she was just a bad kid, okay? And she had no respect for anybody. So when my husband and I were driving home from Laurelwood, he's like, "What are we gonna tell our parents?" Because we didn't know what to tell our parents. And first, he said, he was gonna tell his parents who were in their, are still in their 80s, that, um, Kim had a brain injury and, from the car accident and nobody could see her for 30 days. And I'm like, "Yeah, that's not gonna fly with a lot of people." So we decided that we were just gonna tell everybody what was going on. Um, we started with his parents. We went to my parents, my sisters, my brother. And I have to tell you, I could really kick myself for not doing that sooner. Very few people knew what we were going through with Kim. My girlfriend Lori knew because she worked with, um, Kim worked with her. My sister-in-law knew because she was on the police force and when Kim was getting into trouble, you know, she kind of helped intervene so we could keep her out of jail. Um, once we told everyone what was going on, it was like a weight lifted off of our shoulders. It was like, you know, for so long, we were blaming ourselves. "What did I do? Where, you know, where did we go wrong? They went through dare. They know what's, what's right, what's wrong. We told them, 'Don't use drugs. You don't use drugs.'" And it doesn't work that way with kids. It just, it, it doesn't. It doesn't work that way with people. Um, I think if we would have told our family before, our families beforehand, I think we may have gotten more help. We may have, um, had people telling us, you know, "Watch this, Kim's doing this or Kim's doing this." And the biggest thing that I learned is, I couldn't be ashamed because an addiction, what we learned, because we did go through some family counseling, um, an addiction is a disease, okay? We had to get to the root of the problem. Kim had low self-esteem. That was her problem. We had to work through that to get her to keep off of the drugs. Um, she stayed for the 30 days. She went to the outpatient therapy because somebody always took her. Um, either myself, one of my sisters, her brother, somebody, because she had no car. Um, she didn't have a key to her house. She pretty much had nothing. She was able to keep her job out of the goodness of Lori's heart. Um, and it was kind of weird having her come to work without being high. She actually, I think, did something, if I remember correctly. Um, she stayed in the program that she was supposed to. And that was in January of 2006. In April, she met, re-met Eric, her now husband. Um, it was kind of hard to let go, um, to let her go out with him, you know? Because we weren't sure. He was a good friend of Alan's, but never did the drugs. So it was very hard to let go. Um, my son, they were talking at the time. My son, they were talking at the time, her and my son, and he was kind of like really rough on Eric, you know? "Better take care of my sister or else." But she's made it. She's made it through six years, one month and 14 days and counting. And we are so proud of how far she's come. Six years ago, we would have never thought that she would stand up here and talk to people. We never thought she would even be part of the family. So, you know, the only thing that I can suggest as a parent is, don't keep this a secret. You know, if you have a problem, it's not your fault, okay? There's a lot of things that influence kids taking drugs. And get help. I mean, with the help of Laurelwood, they were awesome. I don't know about the other facilities, but I'm sure they're just as awesome because most of them are run by former addicts, you know? Laurelwood, I know, is run by all former addicts, whether it's an eating disorder, or drugs, or alcohol. So you just need to, just ask for help. Don't keep it inside. If, you know, talk to someone and share it. And I promise you that you can get through this too, like we did.
Give each other a big hug, you two. They always say, "Sharing is caring." Well, you epitomized that, so thank you. Thank you, Mary Ellen. Next, I'd like to introduce Jim Joyner. Jim is a licensed independent chemical dependency counselor and the founder of Joyner &amp; Associates. He has over 40 years of experience in alcohol and drug prevention, treatment, and education. He has provided educational and consultative services for many organizations, including the Cleveland Clinic Foundation, Metro Health, and many others. Jim Joyner.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. Just want to make sure you're still awake. Before I get into my part of the program, I need to give credit where credit is due. You folks may not know this, but you are making history here in Independence. I can't remember in my 40 years working in the field and doing many, many community programs like this that I can remember the turnout, the numbers that you have tonight. Maybe one other program at Beaumont High School a few years ago, which was mandated for the parents to come. So this speaks volumes to me about your commitment to your community, to your families, and to your children. And I think you need to give yourself applause for that because it is truly unique. My goal is to share some things about alcohol and other drugs. My goal is to crowd as much time in the few minutes that I have, as much information that would be informative and stimulating to you. And I know that in the time I have, I won't tell you all you need to know. But if I can encourage most of you, as a result of what shared tonight, to seek more information, then I think that our task has been met here tonight. I want to share my bias and belief upfront and let you know where I stand. My 40 years has brought me to a very real conclusion. I don't know of any other issue in this country that we face that has greater negative impact that touches every man, woman, and child in America than the combined consequences of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. And I know that to some of you, that may sound like a self-serving statement or that I've worked in the field so long, maybe I have tunnel vision. You may even think you know of an issue that has greater negative impact. So here's my challenge to you. If you can identify for me another issue that has greater or even equal, I will give you a million-dollar bill. Oh, you laugh. You say, "Sure." You give it. "I got it. It's right here." As a matter of fact, I'm going to let you pass it around. You can hold it up to light. You can, you know, it's a real million-dollar bill. And that can be yours. Now, I've been carrying that bill around a long, 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 long time. I have no expectation anytime in my lifetime that I will part with that because unfortunately, folks, there is nothing that has greater negative impact that touches us all. Drugs have been around a long time. Ever since we recorded our history, we've talked about our relationship with drugs. So it's not a new thing. Our kids didn't invent it. We didn't invent it. I'm 63 years old. They were drinking when I was a kid. They were smoking dope when I was a kid. And methamphetamine's been around a long time too, and heroin and all the others. And drugs seem to go in cycles, but they don't go away and the consequences continue. And drugs aren't unique. They're as natural as the ocean. They're as natural as the air. There are about 4,000 psychoactive chemicals that are derived from plants that exist throughout the world. We, as human beings, use about 60 of them. Some of you recognize them. The magic mushrooms. We got the peyote cactus, poppy plants, coca leaves. What's this one? Coffee beans and the infamous marijuana. We use drugs because drugs feel good. But how we use drugs in this country, in this society, in this culture is uniquely different. It's our own special brand, as opposed to looking back in history or other cultures. See, it's not that drugs don't exist in other places. The reality is, in those places, there are very defined rules in how you use it. Ride of passage, commune with the gods, spiritual development. In America, unfortunately, we don't cater to that. In America, anytime is a good time. Matter of fact, tonight, after this program, some of you may decide, "Well, you know, we're involved in this community effort. Let's stop and have a few beers." And of course, tomorrow's Friday, TGIF. Thank God it's Friday. You know, you've got to let your hair down, put it on, take it off, whatever you do with it during the weekend. You know, and weekends are made for Michelob and it goes on and on and on. And the problem is, in societies where there aren't clear guidelines, we see the consequence. And there's a clear consequence and consequences in America. If you talk about crime in America, you better talk about alcohol and other drugs. It's the primary catalyst. Unfortunately, this is the only public health issue I know of that we treat as a criminal justice issue. We have almost 2.4 million people incarcerated in our jails and prisons, more than any other country in the face of the earth. As a matter of fact, the United States, which represents about 4.5% of the world population, houses in our jails and prisons 30% of the worldwide jail population. And studies tell us that about 80% of the people that are there are there not because they're bad people, but because of their involvement, their life being out of control because of their alcohol and other drug use. If you think it ends there, you're wrong. Now, you can test this out. I would encourage you to call down to Children and Family Protective Services tomorrow morning. Call over to Jane Edna Hunter Center on the corner of 39th and Euclid. Ask to speak to frontline social worker and ask he or she this simple question. Is there, or what is the primary reason for pulling a child away from their biological parent? And you will not hear them say, "Well, Dad's a Republican and Mom's a Democrat." And they had heated political arguments. They'll say, "Because of alcoholism or other drug dependency." We have in this country over 250,000 kids that are currently under supervision, county supervision. Their parents can't rear them, not because they're bad parents, but because those parents, unfortunately, are unable. Now, this is appalling to me. I think we could stop our program right here and motivate everybody just based on this fact, that we've got to do something. About 18% of women who are pregnant use alcohol. And all of us know, or you should know, that there is absolutely no safe amount of alcohol you can consume while you're pregnant, period. That's it. But yet, the number-one preventable birth defect, mental retardation, exists because women drink. Economics, I can't comprehend $484 billion. What is that? That's beyond my comprehension. But there's so much money to be made in illicit drug traffic. And of course, there's a lot to be made in illegal drug traffic too. Tobacco industry, for example, and nicotine is a drug. Tobacco industry generates a billion dollars a day. Of course, illicit drug trafficking generates much more than that. We see about 60,000 deaths related annually to illicit drug use while you're here. The tragedy that's resulted because of lives lost. We see about 130,000 related to alcohol. We have about 450,000 related to nicotine addiction and tobacco use. Healthcare costs. I wish President Obama would have called me and said, "Jim, what do you think? What can we do to reduce healthcare costs?" I'd say, "Mr. President," very respectfully, "comprehensive address of alcohol or the drugs will do it." But we're used to doing things back-asswards. We're facing an epidemic in America. Opioids are back with a vengeance. Heroin never really went away. It's just back a little more vibrant. Today, the purity of heroin is such, you can snort it. You don't have to inject it to get high. You can snort it and get high. Part of the issue with that is, our young people have heard that if you snort it, don't inject it, you can't get addicted to it. And then there's that phenomenon of the legal opioids. You know, the painkillers. Well, the doctor prescribed it. It must be okay. Purdue Pharma makes it. It's a pharmaceutical. It must be safe. But that doesn't stop the misuse, the abuse, the dependency, and again, the tragedy. 2010, enough painkillers were prescribed to Medicaid every American adult for a month. 2008, 15,000 people die from. And of course, today, it's estimated that about 82 people across this country die every day from just that. Where do we get the drugs? Well, from our doctors and from our friends. You got your pain medication at home in your medicine cabinet. I say, "Mom, Dad, Grandma, Grandpa, put it someplace else." We don't think about this, but kids do their farming. It's a term they use. They farm. They go to friends' houses and they open up the medicine cabinet and they kind of do their shopping, drug shopping. And they take what they need, what they want. And Grandma, Grandpa, kind of absent-minded anyway, they don't remember what they have. The oxy in America, Purdue Pharma changed the formulation. It's harder to break it down, to use it, to snort it. But in Canada, they still have the pills. So people are paying up to $80 to $100 a tab to get a hold of that. I mean, it's... I said earlier, "We do it back-asswards." It's true. Those damn Colombians, those damn Mexicans, those foreigners who produce the drug. 50 to 75% of the methamphetamine used in America comes across the US-Mexican border. I will tell you, our drug problem is not Mexico. We will never, ever, 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 ever stop the drug problem in America, the illicit drug problem on the supply side. The US-Mexican border alone is 2,000 miles. Unless you want to live in a police state, you want to carry around an ID card all the time. Can't happen that way. We have policies based on misinformation. And a lot of those policies are driven by profit. See, in America, and I want to challenge your thinking, this is real, folks. This is serious. In America, dysfunction is profitable. In America, making unhealthy choices drives industries. Our drug problem, our heroin problem, is not Mohammed. He grows poppies on the hillside of Afghanistan because he makes more money when he sells it. He's not growing it to destroy the American people. He can't help it that folks inject that in their arm in New York, in Detroit, in Cleveland, in Independence. 2004, you just saw, they invested a billion dollars to try to defoliate the plants. They reached 533 acres. There's over 400,000 acres estimated under cultivation. It doesn't work. We pump good money after bad money. We're fighting an uphill battle. So what can we do? Well, it started tonight. No more pretending that Independence or any other community is a drug-free zone. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for realistically saying, "We've got to look at this. We've got to stop the tragedy." And you have the opportunity to continue that process. You educate yourself. You develop a comprehensive plan. And folks, the leadership in this community, that step forward in the realistic way that they have, the mayor and the chief of police and the school system, they again are to be applauded because few communities I've seen in my history are willing to do that. "Oh, it's not politically sound. Oh, I don't want people to know." Let me stop because I'm starting to preach. Parents, you are the number-one protective factor. We need to make what's old-fashioned in-fashioned today. Talk to your kids. Get involved in activities. Get them involved in your activities and planning. Eat meals together. Now, for some of you, this is common. For others, it's a little foreign. If you want to reduce the likelihood that they use, let them know your expectations. If I talk to a child and I say, "How will your parents feel if they find out you've been drinking, you're using other drugs?" And the kid goes, "Oh, I don't know", then, "Mom, Dad, you've missed the opportunity." Be an example. Walk the talk. Don't say you don't need drugs to have a good time. "By the way, give me another beer so we can finish this talk." Our kids spend, and Americans in general, five hours or more in front of the TV every day. And I don't know about you, but the last time I looked, there's not too much good there. There's a lot of junk. Let me ask you this. You didn't meet me before tonight, most of you. Would you let me come to your house as a stranger and spend five hours with your child in the TV, or in the basement, or in the TV room? Absolutely not. You slam the door in my face, you call the police, you say, "There's some weirdo at the door." But how many of you allow your child to sit in front of that TV and the menu is wide open and they can ingest as much as they want, as often as they want, anything they want? And then we wonder why our kids make the decisions they do. Do you know who their friends are? Have you talked to their friends, Mom and Dad? When they're going to a party, do you call the home of that parent and say, "Hey, I hear there's a party this at"? "Oh, there's not. You're going to Florida? Maybe you ought to know." If you know your kid and involve yourself with them, you know when they're not behaving normal. Don't be afraid to address your concerns. Trust your gut. You heard the story tonight of a parent. You've got to trust your gut. Something's wrong. Get the resources. Get the help you need. Don't try to fix something you know nothing about. I'm an expert in this. 40 years. I'm the go-to guy. If you're the parent of an addicted child, you're skewed. You're enabling. You're codependent. You're in denial and delusion. You need the perspective. Seek support and help. Let go of the guilt and shame. Look, good kids, and all of our kids are good kids, can make bad decisions and high-risk decisions. There is no easy fix. Know your role. Don't be afraid to stand up. Together, we can make a difference. The most important thing that will happen tonight isn't this event when it ends in several minutes. It will be what you decide to do after this. Trust the process. Don't stop here. Continue. And there are some things that the mayor is planning and the city's planning, folks, to continue this process. And if you are sincere about making a difference and making change, then continue to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Let this be your first of many steps that you're going to take. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Jim. We're going to get you out of here at 9 o'clock, as quick as possible. Just a couple more things, then we want to hear from you. So at this point, I'd like to turn the podium over to Chief John Castro, Assistant U.S. Attorney Joe Pino, and City Prosecutor William Bud Doyle, who'll cover the law enforcement side of things.
Thank you. Just about everything I have to say, I think everybody's touched on. But what I'm going to tell you is an information that I researched or got off the internet, all the facts I want to share with you. I've got firsthand from young people in the city of Independence, their parents, their friends, our detectives that have sat down and talked with these people, and some information from the county coroner and some emergency room people. You know, as you've heard, nobody wakes up one morning and decides they're going to inject heroin into their arm. And there is a typical progression. And this is the most common progression that every one of these kids that we've talked to has shared with us. As you've heard, oftentimes starts with alcohol. As you've heard, oftentimes starts with alcohol, sometimes at a young age, not 15, 16, but maybe 12 years old, 13 years old, and progresses to marijuana, and obviously, everybody that smokes marijuana isn't a heroin addict, but I could tell you that every single person that we've talked to that has an addiction to heroin has started by smoking marijuana. It becomes a culture, it's the friends they hang out with, these are the things they experiment with. There's some crazy drugs that are out there becoming very common, maybe you've heard them, called spice, K2, bath salts. Spice and K2 is a synthetic form of marijuana, it's a green herb with about eight chemicals added to it to give you a similar high as marijuana. We find it on the street, we test it, well, we don't have test kits for it, it's going to come back negative. Okay, you hear the term bath salts, it's not Epsom salt from drug mart, it's called bath salt so that you can buy it at a gas station or buy it at a convenience store. It's a synthetic chemical that gives you a high similar to cocaine or methamphetamine. We took a package of it from a woman the other day, she had it hidden in her clothes, and we were going to charge her accordingly, and we talked to the county prosecutor, and the county prosecutor says, now, you can't file charges down here with that, says, we're seeing so many things in northern Ohio, a lot of these are testing negative. Okay, and as fast as a state can outlaw these new synthetic drugs, there's a chemist to change the makeup, it's not illegal anymore. This is going to be an ongoing battle. What should I know about heroin? You know, you have a handout, you could look up on the internet, it's a white, off-white, brownish powder, maybe, maybe small rocks in some cases. You heard before, there's a common thing that we've heard the first time, some of these kids are introduced to heroin, they tell them to snort it, you won't become addicted, you can't OD if you snort it, obviously not true. Once you're hooked on this stuff, as you hear it, it's a terribly addictive thing to beat. Some things to look for, again, I might have spent a lot of time, you have some handouts there, these are things we've heard mostly from parents that we've talked to. If you find strange things in your house, implements used for grinding, hose clamps, I'm thinking of a hose clamp, the kids use it as a grater, and they use prescription drugs to grade them up so that they can snort the prescription drugs, or dissolve them and inject them. I'm going to back up for a second, in this progression to heroin, you know, we talked about marijuana, bath salts, these types of things, one of the things that led to this proliferation of heroin is these prescription drugs, as you've heard. So many people are being prescribed painkillers, you have kids in school being prescribed Adderall, ADHD medications. So, how did this start? Kids get it from their parents' medicine cabinets, kids are going to school and trading their medications and selling pills to each other. Once you get an opiate in your body, and you see OxyContin, they talk about as selling for $80 a pill, nobody can afford that, and heroin steps in as the best and cheapest So when you look around, you find items in your house, you're looking for things that could be used to grind pills, pill grinders, hose clamps, anything used to snort drugs, a straw, pens with the cartridges taken out, rolled dollar bills, glass tubes, items that are used to dissolve heroin in water so it can be injected, typically spoons with burn spots on them, burned clothing, tissues with black residue from wiping off and cleaning spoons, and you have a whole list of symptoms of drug use, you could refer to your list. So the question is, what is the police department in Independence doing? We now come to this realization, we've had some tragic incidents in our city, and what are we doing about it? You know, the first thing that we try to do is obviously get in touch with parents, and I think the biggest eye-opening moment that I had recently, going back a couple of years, we had a meeting with the school officials, we thought, you know, we're seeing a lot of problems, it's time we sit down and get a handle on this, and I'm ready to go in this meeting and share information with the school, and they're going to share information with us, and we sat down, and everybody had the same information, everybody knew who the kids were that were in trouble, but more disturbing than that, either we had talked to the parents, or the school had already talked to the parents, yet we still have this problem. And it gets back to the issues we discussed before, it's human nature, if a policeman comes to your house and, you know, appears to be accusing your son or daughter of being a drug addict, your reaction isn't going to be good, and it usually wasn't. There's a lot of denial, there's shame, there's guilt, and there's fear that we're going to come in and arrest your kid. So, at this point, we realize this is something we need to overcome, so what are we doing right now? First thing we're doing is, we're going to be very aggressive on patrol, and we have been for several months, and we've been camped outside people's houses, we followed cars, okay, we've done some other investigative things I'm not going to talk about. My point is, we're going to pursue anybody and any place that we have cause to believe is involved in drug activity. What we, you know, if we have probable cause, we're going to follow up on it, and I've taken a few complaints in my office, feeling that officers have been over-aggressive, or that they're harassing people, and my comment is usually the same, we're going to follow up on any probable cause that we have, and I'd rather have a complaint that we're being too aggressive than to have another tragedy happen in our city. Everybody knows heroin's been around forever, and we've seen in years past, there's been a couple residents in our city that had a heroin addiction, but it was, at that time, pretty isolated, you know, nobody's perfect, no city is perfect, there's always, a couple people have some problems. Obviously, now, it's beyond that, and it's become an epidemic, and it's become readily available commonplace, so, actually, for the past few years, every individual that we've come in contact in the city that is involved in drug activity, we've sat down with our detectives, tried to interview them, debrief them, get what information we can so that we could go to work, and we're a small city, and all these people are friends, they know each other, and nobody really wants to cooperate very much. Obviously, we've had some tragic incidences, and I'll say that in the past three months, we've got more information and had more cooperation from people than we have in the past three years, I'm very grateful for that. In the past two months, we've searched five homes in Independence, one with a search warrant, four with the consent of the owners, that's not something that would have happened even four or five months ago. In all but one case, we recovered drugs and drug abuse instruments, and I'm pretty hopeful that some people have had their eyes open, and hopefully, there's three or four young people that are going to be on their way to rehab that maybe otherwise would not have been. The third thing that we're trying to focus on is breaking this cycle of corruption, and having these young adults spread this habit to juveniles coming up in our community. In the past couple months, we sat down with, I'm going to say about 12 sets of parents of juveniles that we found in houses where we know this activity's taking place, or in cars with young adults, you know, we're talking 15, 16, 17-year-old high school students driving around with 23, 24-year-old young adults. Obviously, that's not a good situation. When we see it, we're taking the extra step, we're removing those kids from that car, and we're calling their parents immediately. The result has been very positive, and I think a lot of people have had their eyes That's what I can tell you about what's going on in Independence. Right now, I'd like to introduce Joe Pinho, Joe is Assistant US Attorney for the Northern District of Ohio, and he is currently Chief of the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, and I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank the chief, and I want to thank council for having me out here tonight. I can't tell you how many communities want to hide this problem and sweep it under the carpet, because that's the easy thing to do, and in this community, they're not doing that. I'm the lead federal narcotics prosecutor for the Northern District of Ohio, all I do is prosecute federal narcotics crimes, and I have a huge team that works for me, and we're that busy that that's all I do, and the team that works with me, that's all we do, and we're not even putting our finger in the dyke of this problem. I want to talk to you a little bit about the scope of the problem, and the resources that I've promised the mayor and the council and the chief of police, that we're going to commit, the vast federal resources, because, ladies and gentlemen, we work for you. I'm an Independence resident, I live in Independence, I care about this issue, I have kids in the primary school, I have relatives in the middle school and the high school, and we are going to get on top of this problem together. I've committed to the mayor the resources of the FBI, the DEA, ICE, ATF, and the various federal and local and state task forces that are designed to do nothing but address this specific problem. I've recently shared some intelligence with the chief that was produced by the National Drug Intelligence Center, I don't know if you're aware, but right now, the city of Independence has a police officer that's committed to one of our federal task forces. With that individual, we are sharing intelligence every day, we're passing intelligence to him about the scope of the problem that we're aware of, and he's passing that knowledge back to us. I want to talk to you a little bit about what the scope of that problem is, especially as it relates to heroin. Just recently, the National Drug Intelligence Center in 2011 declared heroin the number one drug threat in the entire state of Ohio. It's also the number one drug threat in our region, and fast becoming the number one drug threat in the United States of America. And the reason for that is, and I want to echo the words of Mr. Joyner and thank him for his comments, is because of the prescription drug problem. It's sad to say, ladies and gentlemen, that today, I could more easily take you to certain neighborhoods in and around our city and buy heroin than I could buy OxyContin or Vicodin or some other prescription drug. It's cheaper, it's easier to get, heroin right now in the city of Cleveland is selling anywhere from $100 to $150 a gram, wholesale on a kilogram is $75,000. It is big business, it's easy to get, and it's everywhere. The type of heroin that we're seeing today is not the type of heroin that we saw in the 1960s, Mr. Joyner commented about that, you can snort this heroin, and that's different. And that has taken the stigma out of this drug, and that's why we're seeing it much more in our suburban communities and much more in our young people. People believe if I'm taking a needle and I'm tying a rubber band around my arm and I'm shooting up, I'm an addict. If I'm snorting a powdery substance up my nose at a bar or someplace else, I'm cool, I'm hip. And it's destroying us from the inside out. Now, we're on top of the problem, we know about it, we know where it's coming from, most of the heroin that comes to this country comes to this country through Mexico, it is body-carried into this country, and when I go out and I talk in the schools and I talk to young people, I talk to them about this, think about what this means, ladies and gentlemen, most heroin comes in this country body-carried, it's called heroin fingers, it's about the size of my thumb, about that long, maybe a little bit thicker, and what I tried to explain to young people is, this has been sitting in someone's butt for 48 hours, and you're putting it in your nose and putting it in your vein, how dumb is that? But we're doing it, that's what we're doing. The other thing I want to talk to you about is, a lot of kids, and I think Mr. Joyner commented about this too, don't think it's going to kill you, it can't kill you, if I snort it up my nose, it's going to be fine. I want to tell you that anyone who's using any of these drugs that are out in our community today is playing Russian roulette with their lives, there's a million different ways that it can kill you. One of the ways that heroin could kill you is, you might get heroin that's too good, too pure. Heroin comes into this country at about 80 to 90% pure, all right? It's sold on the street at anywhere from 10 to 15% pure, so if you get the wrong chemist, these homemade chemists, that gives you heroin that's too good, you're dead, that simple. Snort it, inject it, it's too pure, you're dead. But there's another way that it can kill you, and I always want to talk to the young people about this, the people that you're buying it from, these, you know, pearls of our society that are out there peddling this garbage on our street every single day, cut heroin with different substances, like I said, it comes into the country 80 to 90% pure, they're selling it at 10% pure, you do the math, think about the profit margin, but in order to do that, they have to cut it with different substances, and they will cut it with anything to increase their profits. I just recently did a case in Cleveland, the main heroin dealer was a member of the Latin Kings gang, for a while, he was able to obtain a drug from dentist offices, I think it was called benzocaine, and he and a crew were robbing dentist offices to get this drug, and they were using that drug to cut the heroin with, which was fine. That source of supply dried up for him, and he had to find a new substance with which to cut the heroin with, and I sat down and I talked to this guy after we prosecuted him, and he started cooperating with us, and we asked him, what were you cutting the heroin with? And he said, well, when the benzocaine ran out, I turned to rat poison. And we said, rat poison? And he said, yeah, and the first time, I didn't know how much rat poison to put in, so I took a guess, and I made up a batch, and I put rat poison in, and I sold it, and I just hoped that nobody would die. And I looked at this guy, and I just couldn't believe how cavalier he was about what he was doing, and this is what I want to communicate to anybody that's in this room, or anybody that knows somebody, if you're out there buying drugs off the street from people like this, you have no idea what you're buying and what you're getting into, and this is how little the dealer cares about you, his treasured customer, that this guy's cutting it with rat poison and on a whim, you know, I just hope nobody's going to die. And luckily for him, and I just can't believe it, nobody did die from that batch of heroin, he came up with the right amount, and believe it or not, a little bit of rat poison doesn't kill you. So ladies and gentlemen, I know the mayor is a little off-schedule, and I want to keep my comments brief, the other way that it could ruin your life, and I think you heard from Kim tonight, how it, you know, almost ruined her life, is just purely through the suffering of addiction, and what you do, and what you do to your family, and what you do to your loved ones, and more importantly, what you do to yourself, and how you destroy yourself, you know, from the inside out, and you do this voluntarily. And that's another way that it can kill you, so there's all these different ways, have you heard anything tonight about any good that comes of it? Even the high, that you're on the high, you suffer after the high with the symptoms of withdrawal, they beat you up like you have the flu. So you have to ask ourselves, why are we using it, why are we doing it? Ladies and gentlemen, you hear a lot about wars that this country is waging, successful wars, wars in Afghanistan, wars in Iraq, well, I'm here to tell you about another war that you hear a lot about, and nobody's being honest with you, and I'm on the front lines of that war, the war against drugs, ladies and gentlemen, we are losing, and losing in a huge way, and we're not losing because myself and my cohorts and the police are not locking up enough people. Like Mr. Joyner said, actually, we're second in the world, most incarcerated people, second to only one other country, China, believe it or not, and how sad is that when you consider how much bigger China is than the United States? We are locking up dealers as quickly as we can, the average sentence federally is five years for a first offender, and we're still losing, and do you know why? Because we're not doing enough to combat use. I don't prosecute users, I don't, addicts, it's not for me, I prosecute big, you know, organizations, gangs, huge traffickers, we don't do enough, it's, you know, nobody even in the county is prosecuting most users, in a lot of places, it's a misdemeanor, you get rehab. Until we combat use, until we stop the desire to buy drugs, the dealers are never going to stop because it's that lucrative, and it's steps like the mayor and everyone is taking tonight that is going to allow us to do that, and I'm here to tell you that I'm committed to help, they've asked me to speak at the schools, and I'm willing to do that, and I told you that the resources are there, and again, Mayor, I want to thank you for what you're doing tonight, and I want to turn it back over to the mayor, and thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you very much for being with us this evening. I have one message, I'm going to be about a minute. What I want to convey to you this evening is the fact that these groups of people, the law enforcement segment of the people you've heard this evening, our one goal is to protect you, always keep that in mind, our goal is to protect you, and most importantly, we want to protect your children. Now, we do this in certain ways, we do it through interdiction, as you heard the chief talk, we do it through surveillance, but most importantly, most importantly... But most importantly, most importantly, we do it through intelligence. And that's information. And we need information. The only way that we can help you is you have to help us. This is a cooperative effort. You parents, you have to be vigilant, you have to be observant and you have to be cooperative. Students, you have to do the unthinkable. You have to see things and say, "I'm concerned about this. I'm gonna go talk to somebody." It doesn't have to be a policeman, it can be a counselor, it can be a teacher. You need to talk. We need information and we're not out to hurt people, we're out to help. We wanna protect. Thank you.
Thank you, Bud. Thank you, Chief Nacastro, Joe Pinju, and Bud Doyle, thank you. Very informative, very to the point. And I think everybody walks out with a little more information about what we're trying to do to help you with your families. Next, I'd like to introduce again our superintendent, Steve Marlowe, who'll be covering some of the next steps we're taking as a community. Steve?
Thank you, mayor. Very quickly, if you do have questions on the cards, if you could pass those to the ends of the aisles, we'll have someone collect those while I go through the, just a few next steps. On February twenty-ninth, and it's in your handout, at seven PM at the Cogga Valley Career Center, is hosting a program called Legally Addicted about prescription drug abuse and you've heard about that epidemic today. That's on February twenty-ninth at seven at the Cogga Valley Career Center. Mr. Joyner is also going to be hosting a parent education series which will take place over four consecutive weeks at the Independence Civic Center. Dates and times will be announced and again, thank you very much for that. We're also working with the Alternative Horizon Counseling Center here in Independence to bring you Operation Street Smart, a program that shows actual examples of marijuana, cocaine, crack, and heroin and this program addresses the dangers of prescription medications as well. We'd also like to thank the Alternative Horizon Counseling Center for their assistance and support for this, uh, evening's programs. And also, just from a school and city perspective, we're constantly calling and talking to people about staff and student support and programs that we are going to be bringing here to, to our community in Independence. And we'll keep you posted on, on that in terms of our websites. So hopefully, if you've had questions, you have passed those over. And if you need a card, just raise your hand and I'll come around and, and, and give you a card. And I'm going to give it back to the mayor.
Thanks, partner. We're getting cards? Okay. Now, like I said earlier, if we don't answer your question this evening, we will, in, on the website, twenty-five and live, and we may go as far as to send information out to every, all the families. But, uh, be assured, we're gonna do the best we can to answer all the questions that are generated this evening. With this time, as I mentioned earlier in the program, that we have a, a select group of the clergy that have, uh, found this to be very important and I do appreciate, again, every church is represented, every church in our community is represented here, thank you very much. So I'd like to welcome Donna Barrett, pastor of the Rockside Church, to say thank you. Look at, they're all here. Solidarity.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, mayor. Tonight is about next steps and resources and as a next step from our perspective, there will be a prayer meeting held and this is not in your handout, so jot this down if you're interested, at the Indiana Wesleyan University on Wednesday, February fifteenth at ten AM. That's across the street from Appleby's at forty-one hundred Rockside Road. All of you are welcome to attend who would be interested in praying for this situation and for this need. As the five of us clergy of churches in Independence met Wednesday morning to discuss this situation, Father Pete surfaced a great point as a resource for a what next step. I'm going to ask him to share briefly that suggestion that he had, which will be very helpful to you.
Thank you. We felt it was important for everybody in the whole community to know that any of us are available at your service if anyone needs to talk, whether it's a person having a problem with drugs or somebody in the family. As clergy, we're not in competition with each other, we really have a beautiful relationship and work well together. So we want to let you know that we're here as partners together to serve the Lord by serving you. So if anyone needs that religious support, that spiritual support, feel free to contact any of the clergy. Thank you.
As I listened tonight, uh, to this young lady share her story and realized how deeply this impacts all of us, from insurance companies to healthcare, to us as a culture, the phrase from the Lord's Prayer that came to my mind is, "Thy kingdom come, thy will be done." And that's not what we're experiencing right now. And so, uh, we're going to just spend a little bit of time praying in your handout. You can follow along with us if you'd like. Each one of the ministers are going to lead us in a prayer and you can respond with, "Lord, hear our prayer." We'd like to begin with the Lord's Prayer and so we're going to ask you just to stand, stretching would probably feel good right now, and, um, join me if you would in praying and then each one of our ministers are going to guide us in a time of prayer of calling out to God for his intervention in this situation. Let's pray the Lord's Prayer together, shall we? Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
We'll be joining together in a series of litnes and prayers and you're welcome if you're so inclined when we say, "Let us pray to the Lord. Lord, hear our prayer." Dear God, our Father and Creator, we, the community of Independence, come before you this evening, asking for your help and favor as we battle the scourge of drugs in our midst. We know that the world in which we now live is one that is very much changed from the one you originally made, for it has become corrupted in many ways. It's corrupted by evil greed and the desire to easily escape from those troubles that can so easily devour us. And yet, despite the sinful choices we humans often make, you have not abandoned nor rejected us. Your love and mercy is available to all who call upon you as your word declares. The Lord is near to all who call on Him and to all who call on Him in truth. Lord, hear our prayer.
For the remu-, removal of drugs from our community, let us pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For freedom for those dealing with addiction, let us pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For parents, as they deal with this problem among their children, let us pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For those who grieve for someone who has died from this malady, let us pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For city and school officials, as they seek to help young people, let us pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For the police, as they seek to stop and apprehend those who sell and distribute, let us pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
That God will stop those who traffic in this evil on a national and international level, let us pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
That God will destroy every scheme of the evil one, let us pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
That God will bring deliverance and freedom from this assault on our community and land, let us pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For our mayor and all our city leaders, that they may offer loving support in our city's challenging time, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For all the residents of Independence, that they may find the strength to overcome the obstacles of substance abuse, let us pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For the city of Independence, that the residents continue to work together for the safety of all individuals, let us pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, hear our prayer and bring freedom and deliverance for our community and land. Stop the spread and usage of drugs in our midst. Open our eyes to help one another so that all our residents might live lives of productivity and hope. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please be seated. And the mayor is going to lead us now.
Thank you. That was a wonderful prayer. Next, uh, it's Q and A time. So we've, uh, assembled as many of the questions as possible, we'll try to get answers. We have the group of people here to help us with these answers. You've been somewhat specific to some of your questions, so with that, Vern Blaze is gonna take over the Q and A portion.
And we won't have time to get to them all, but we're committing that these will all be posted on the city website and if possible, on the school website, so you could get the answers that you requested. Uh, one question that came up a couple times was probably for Kim or Mary Ellen, "Why do the drug tests keep coming back negative when Kim was definitely using drugs?"
Oh, I have to go up? You know, when Kim got out of rehab and she was sober, I asked her that very same question. I just could not figure it out. And what she told me is, when she went in for the drug test, she asked for a two-panel test. A two-panel test would test for marijuana and cocaine. You needed to ask for a ten-panel and a ten-panel will cover all the drugs. That's how she passed those drugs tests. Now we know.
Thank you.
The next two might be directed for Steve Marlowe, uh, they were on the same lines one. Are you going to replay this to the primary school, middle school, and high schools during the school day? And a second related one, will they bring more drug education with all, within all three city schools and more often?
We are going to have a tape of this and it will be on our website and it will be on the cable channel. We also are in the process of developing more programs and services for our, our, our children specifically at the schools, so yes to, to both of those.
Again, two related ones, again, probably for Chief Nacastro, Steve Marlowe. If I know of students in my city's high school who are selling drugs, who do I share that information with? And then secondly, can you search the kids themselves? A couple students told me that kids had drugs on them.
One, one of the things we realized we had to do was improve communication. So if you're a student in the school and you have information, um, any, any of your school officials, your principal, Bill McGinnis, Mary Dolus, your counselor, Sergeant Brad Barowey, our school resource officer, uh, if, if you need to have that information passed along through a parent or, or anything of that nature, just get the information to an adult. Call my office, I'm, I'm there Monday through Friday, uh, and we'll, we'll take that information any way we can get it. Can, can a student be searched in a school? There, there are probably two parts to that question. As a police officer, we need a reasonable suspicion or probable cause to search an individual for drugs. I wanna turn back to Steve for the school's policy because I'm sure it's a little bit different than ours.
We do, we suspect, if someone comes to us and says that so-and-so gave so-and-so something, that if we suspect, we absolutely can bring the child down and, uh, ask them to empty their pockets, search their book bags, check their lockers, things of that nature. And we do do that.
Thank you, Steve and chief. Uh, this will be the last one we'll take this evening and again, we will post all the questions on our website and, and this one would be for Mary Ellen or Kim. What is the cost of a thirty-day rehab stay at Laurelwood?
I don't know the exact cost. Um, I do know that it was twelve, in the twelve thousand range and after six years, I just finished paying them off. Uh, my parents made me pay them all by myself and I had to get a lot of jobs to do that, but I just paid them off, so...
Thank you. I believe Mayor Kurtz is gonna come up and close it out. I think we should be proud as a community that we were able to come together tonight like we did, the schools, the city, and the church community, and especially to be in a public building like we are and to pray in Jesus' name is just awesome.
Thank you, Vern. Thank all of, all those that spoke this evening that, uh, gave us the, the opportunity to listen, to learn. Uh, I wanna thank everybody, the clergy, Donna specifically, for all of your help and, and support in putting this project together. Um, I hope you found it to be informative, somewhat inspirational. Kim, Mary Ellen, thank you. And, um, this is the beginning. This is step one. This is something that we can't, it's a marathon we're in here, it's not a sprint. This is something we gotta, we took the initiative to get this going. I wanna thank all the speakers, all those that put, Angie, Mary, thank you very much. Superintendent Marlowe has been a hundred and ten percent supportive, he's, he's, um, he's the real deal. You guys did a great job as school board and he's a great partner to have too. Um, with that, the most important thing is that the fact that you're here this evening. The fact that you took the time out of your, you know how important this is for yourself, for your children, for your relatives, for your families. Because the one thing about our community, it's centered around family and if we can have this type of support for this town hall meeting, then it's gonna motivate and inspire the rest of us to keep going, knowing like the chief said, it's not gonna be easy, there will be some moments of disappointment when people aren't happy the way we're, we're doing our best to do the, our job. But at the, and Joe also said, we've got the support of the federal government, state government, we've invested some of our people in some of the federal programs to make it, to make sure that we're knowing what's going on beyond our small community. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, you make the difference, each and every one of you. So on behalf of all the elected officials, the school board, the superintendent, myself, I'd like to say thank you for, all of you for taking the two hours. We said we'd get you out of here as close to nine o'clock as possible, we've done it and all the support people that worked for the city and the school that helped us out. So with that, Angie's given me another cue. Oh, the survey. Go ahead, Angie.
Thank you. Um, what we did was, we have a short survey that you should've gotten when you came in. If you didn't get it, then we have copies for you. We just ask you to take a few minutes to fill it out and leave it with us before you leave. Thank you.
And Kim and Mary Ellen, thank you for making a difference, making a difference in other people's lives. God bless all of you and thank you, be safe going home. Thank you very much.